Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to our commission work session on Monday, May nineteenth. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bollos. I have Commissioner Gage Fore and Commissioner Jim Harvey with me today. Our first item is a discussion and or action for approval of the minutes for the commission work session held on May twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve. Second.
Oh, in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Item two, discussion regarding Westbridge Meadows rezon proposal. Charlie Ewer, Bert Grover, Sean Woodston, Gary Myers. Oh, yeah, there you are. Tammy Edel. Welcome, Charlie.
Thank you. Well, as we discussed two Mondays ago, I think it was, Westbridge Meadows is a rezon request, rezon project for master plan development west of the river and south of the railroad track. We wanted to break up the components of the development into smaller bite sized pieces. So the first one we want to talk to you guys about is water and the concerns that you guys have about water. And so we brought Scott Paxman and Darren.
Darren's in.
Darren Hess. Sorry, Darren.
You're good.
Met you a few times from We've Raisin Water to help us understand water availability and what the water situation is. I think it's important when we think about water to know that that is not unique to this project. Water issue is going to be any project. So regardless of the number of units you ultimately approve on this project, whether it's their request of thirteen thousand or some number less, at the point that we hit some peak, some amount of units, if we're not conserving a lot and not using a lot of that water on our outside areas, we're gonna have water issues and development won't be able to move forward, whether it's theirs or or others. So we want to talk a little bit about that. And let you guys just ask some questions for you.
I think I'll start with you, Commissioner Fore.
Questions? Well, so I think it really comes down to, and I've had some conversations, obviously, the water's a big issue. I hope that we have an understanding that there wouldn't be any permits issue. This couldn't really become a reality until such time as we provided what I call wet water.
Yes.
Okay, I think we understand that term. If not, we have a couple of experts in the room here that can. But I, well, my opinion is this, I, that will eventually either solve itself or not solve itself. To me, the question comes down to, is that a piece of land? Is that a piece of dirt? That makes sense for development? And if so, then what should the density be? And as I mentioned a couple, three weeks ago, after having that meeting with some water users in the county, I think it's prudent for us to consider using what I would call unproductive land in Western Weber County that's never been irrigated, probably never will be, and do what I call the Saint Washington County model, which is let's put homes on ground that doesn't take it out of agriculture that hasn't been used for water, which traditionally we haven't done in this county because we've had plenty of other ground. So I'm not, I, I think it makes sense at this site to put in residential development. Now, again, I think in order to make what we've talked about at Weaver Basin, if I might, as far as trying to minimize water output on residential, and it probably had to be culinary, not secondary, again, decrease in infrastructure, but limit then the green, the turf, almost down to zero, maybe some drip lines. So it's basically about conservation. So can we, can we put constraints on this enough to conserve the water that would allow itself, that that ground would allow itself to put homes on? I think the answer to that is yes, in my opinion. I would like rather see density go there than take it out of primary, like the very old town and some of the other farms out there until, obviously, until they're ready. But I think we have to look forward. And again, this is not something that's gonna happen over the next few years. You're probably twenty, twenty-five, maybe thirty year timeframe. So is it the right decision today to allow this project to go forward under some type of rezon, knowing the constraints are in place for water and obviously sewer that will have to be resolved? So I guess I'm saying I'm, I'm open to see what the, the plan would be. I, if this does go forward, I'd like to see some type of phasing. I think that the issue would be, at least in my mind, if we were to say, okay, you can put thirteen thousand X number of homes out there, starting. I just don't think that's sends the right message to majority of the public because they're gonna think we just approved thirteen thousand homes, which we really didn't. So I think we have to couch this with some type of phasing. Okay, we'll allow this in. When you hit this milestone, go on. So that's where I'm at.
Shaheer?
Look, one of the nice things about our planning commission is they do a deep dive into all these projects. I don't know what that means, deep dive.
Sounds good.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, yeah.
Good thing we brought the water, guys.
My size is a little more reliant than some of you skinnier guys. I'm really trying to learn about this, though I've spent time, Jeff, we've met, I've spent time with some folks on the other side. As far as the water goes, look, the great part about being here is Darren, you and Scott, I trust you guys. I trust you guys to make the best decisions for in the area you serve. And if you say this, I'm gonna go with that. I don't make decisions, I'm not making decisions as much on the water because I trust you, those, but I trust you to do the right thing. But I'm still hanging up a little bit with density. I'm hanging up with the three hundred foot barrier along the shoreline of the Great Salt Lake, even though it was or wasn't how it was addressed, or whether it was done right, or the, the personalities involved. I'm still trying, in my mind, I'm still trying, I'm working my way through that. I've not, I've not landed anywhere yet. I just, I've met a couple of times with both Rick and, Gary with you too, and Rick and Charlie. I mean, I've really started to invest a lot of time in this. And I've had other people in the county that have taken up a lot of my time lately, so. Overall, it's been, they only have so much to give, but I'm getting there. There's, there's a lot of coding in that, but that's okay. That's what I got to say.
Anything else?
So probably a ton of it.
Darren, Scott, do you want to address Commissioner For's thoughts on, on faving and staging the project?
If I could, I'd like to step back a little bit. We, we have met with the developer. And they told us their plans and their ideas of, with a traditional, I think at the, at the time, at the outset, it was more of a traditional type of a development, and they were requiring about five thousand some odd acre feet of water. And we said, well, that's not possible, not from us. So is there, what, what can you do to reduce that demand? And so we started talking about some of the other developments they've done in Nevada and in Utah County and so forth. And they've done a ton. They've got some great experience in putting in very water efficient type developments. And so that, that helped ease our mind a bit. And, and we, we threw out numbers like, well, maybe two thousand acre feet. But, but first of all, we started saying, okay, where, what water could you bring to the table? And they, they said they had purchased water rights. They'd been working with, they didn't say this, but I assume the Marriott's on, on the water that they have out there in that area. And, and so they have water that they would bring to the table as well. But we encourage them, strongly encourage them, this has gotta be, especially in the area where they're, they're developing, which is really, it's almost, it's not quite wetlands, but it's salt grass and a lot of, that's why it's not developed or farmed. And, and so very ultra efficient landscapes, drip irrigation, very, very small patches of, of lawn, if they allow it, and, and so forth. And they were very, very amenable to doing something like that. But they also said, yeah, this will be a phased approach, maybe a thousand homes at a time or something like that. I don't know what their phasing is, but and, and we, we told them, we're not gonna, we're not gonna contract for water upfront for the thirteen thousand, or even a portion of the thirteen thousand. It's gotta be phase by phase approvals because we have a very limited supply left in that ten thousand acre foot range, and we've got requests for that water all over our five counties. Snyderville Basin, East Summit County, Morgan County, Upper Weber County. So we can't just say, yeah, all of it's going there. So that's kind of where we are as far as, we felt good about our discussions with the developer as far as their ability to do such a, a water efficient development like that. And so that's our hopes is that between the planning commission and, and commissioners, that, that that would be the direction that they go. Of course, this is, this isn't approving down to that level at this point, but I understand.
And I think the issue is, is, is the fact that, you know, typically out in West Weber County, we're doing a lot of ag conversion, right? And that's historically what we've done in the West Haven, you know, Hooper, you know, Taylor West Weber area. With this being undeveloped, it's, it's just a little more concerning because there is no ag conversion here, you know, historically. And so you're bringing water from somewhere else, you know, to this person. And that you have to ensure that you have enough water that you can move, and where are you moving that from, you know? Are you drying something else as a result of, you know, by doing that? And so that's just a little bit different here with this development because it hasn't historically been used on these, on these properties. And so you just have to be cognizant of that fact, I think, that that's what we're doing. And so we just gotta be so careful with outdoor water use, especially, right, in this development. So and, and the developer knows that, you know, so.
Andrew, do you have anything to add?
I think that everything that's been discussed was also discussed in the planning commission process. We've been to several meetings with the developer and Weaver Basin Water. They've been gracious, all of them have been gracious enough to, to attend and, and be active in the process, which is really great. Happy to see that kind of cooperation. The, the phasing has to be done. I mean, I think every, you know, I think the developer understands that there's no other way to be able to do this based on water, but it's not just a water thing either, you know? I mean, economics might eventually play a role in some of how things develop. Eventually, hopefully not, because I really like the way that this, this particular development's kind of put together. Because I think the development itself brings efficiency. It brings efficiency to infrastructure, to water, to use, and it essentially, if it builds out the way that it's planned, brings the city to Weber County. And I think that this is a better way to plan for a city than just for an area to become a city. And because there's something behind it, there's, there's a goal, there's an achievement that need, that's, that's set out to be made here. And it's, doesn't start out with a bunch of angry people, other than the ones that don't like development in general, and that's understandable. But it actually brings together a lot of different facets of what I think our modern day planning should be about. And, and so I, I look at this as a real potential, this one and the other, the other development that we're looking at out in that area, that Black Pine Development, especially based on the fact too, that we have an area out there from, you know, that's been dedicated, or whatever the right word is, to the inland port. If these, if these industrial areas grow jobs, it, it should be nice to be able to have residential areas near these jobs. And, and residential areas that are more affordable, they're not affordable, nothing's affordable, but that are more affordable than what we traditionally have in unincorporated, you know? So I like, I like the way that this is coming together, just because of the fact that it seems like there's actually a thorough thought process that's being had to determine what this becomes. Anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, first of all, I appreciate you breaking this up into smaller chunks for us so that we can bite off a little bit each week.
Yeah.
So in regards to water, anything that you want to add to that discussion?
Wanted to ask Andrew if he remembers how many angry people spoke against this development in the hearing.
Quite a few, but they were angry for a different, a different reason. They weren't angry about the development. They were angry about how it was possibly going to encroach the WMA. And, you know, everybody has their opinion to how rights work. As far as I'm concerned, property rights are just like gun rights or any other rights that we have. They're fully enforceable to what they're enforceable to. And to me, you know, and I, I don't want to overemphasize this, but boundary of the property is you do what you do on your side, however you're governed, and on my side, I do what I do, how I'm governed. And if there's any negotiation that can take place in between that, that's great. And if that appeases process and makes people happy or unhappy, that can go both ways. If everybody's mad, there's a good deal. If everybody's happy, there was a good deal. Depends on how you want to look at that. Is a half, is a glass half full or half empty, right? But, but mostly those, those were the complaints. Actual landowners, I can go back in my notes and I can count, there were three actual landowners that were there. And one.
Landowners from the area.
From the area that were, that were unhappy. And one, it was kind of hard to determine whether it was happy or unhappy. We kind of got a manifesto dropped off in front of us, a very brief explanation, which I didn't bring that with me, but I kind of get a kick out of it. That's why I keep the paperwork. And, and, and from what I understand, it might be part of the property that's involved in this development. So not sure how that's gonna land or wash out, but anyway. So that's, that's what I recall is, is there.
No, that's, that's actually the, the point that I was hoping to make. It's one of the first public hearings that I've been to on a rezon where we had just less than a, less than a handful of people who live in that area speak against it. And one of them, and it might have been the one with the manifesto, he got up to speak against this project, but it ended up, he was actually against a different project that was down the road and that was on the same agenda. And so I think we had two people in.
In their pinroom.
I heard, oh, that's right, that's right. We did have one.
Building, and I can't remember the other one, but there were three.
That's right. We did have one, one landowner who was right next door. His big concern was his family trust, I think, has a portion of property that is inside of these boundaries. And it kind of sounds like the family might not be in full agreement on whether or not they're in or out of the development. So that he just wanted to make sure that Weaver County wasn't developing property that, where property owners didn't want to, want to see it there. So it's.
My question, and Andrew, I, I don't mean to, I'm gonna lob to you, but which came first, Daybreak or Harriman?
On our tour?
No, we're.
Not on our tour. No, Daybreak, Daybreak.
Daybreak. Daybreak came first. And then it was, isn't it in Harriman Town, the city?
Yeah, so there's a couple of other large developments. So Harriman City, obviously, is there already, but, but there's large development. I'm assuming that's what you're relating to. There's a couple of large developments in Harriman. But Daybreak was, was the first large scale master plan approved in, in that area.
The reason I asked the question is, I was intrigued with your comment. I believe you said something about we should do this as a city or something to do with, we should plan it as a city or plan it as, what would?
I think it's, I think it's being planned more the way that a city should be planned. It's being based on the build, not, not what happens to their land, because we already determined what's gonna happen with the land. It's going to be X density, it's gonna have X amount of commercial base, it's going to have X amount of, of population build out. And it's, it's really all the fundamentals in my mind, and I'm not a professional here. I'll give the floor to, to Rick and Charlie on that. But it seems like to me, this is a more proper way to plan something, especially in an area this large, that'll bring the growth. It's not organic to begin with, but once it starts, it'll bring the organic growth because it's already planned for.
You, you know, one of the things I liked on our tour is that, that your vineyard had a place in, had a place, a spot for a city office, for a fire officer, for a wreck building, or for a city going on, cities going awnings, kind of a thing. I just, I'm interested, a lot going on in this, a lot going on up here.
I'm sure they have agreed, at least from a fire perspective, to provide two acres per five thousand dwelling unit that's created in there. That will help the fire district keep up with demand as time goes on. So that we've also have written into the tentative agreement that you guys will be seeing here pretty soon, that any amount of natural green space or park space that the park district doesn't want could potentially be used for municipal buildings or schools or something.
Or a drone port.
Or drone port, yes. I'll, I'll be above. Yeah. So those kinds of things are being considered in there as well. On the subject of, of water, I'm glad to hear it's not quite as big of a, of a, of a concern as I thought maybe it was. I just wanted to make sure we all thought it all the way through. And I've talked to Commissioner Harvey a little bit about this and a little bit of a different perspective, but a lot of people who, well, a lot of members of the public think that if we stop development, we stop population growth. And it's the chicken and egg. It's the Harriman or Daybreak, right? Which, by the way, Harriman in nineteen ninety seven had nine hundred a res, uh, nine hundred population, nine hundred people, and in two thousand and seven had twenty one thousand. So Harriman was first, but it wasn't very much of a day. So the question is, is does population grow houses or does, do houses grow populations? Now, I think it is the first one. It's about supply and demand. It's about whether or not we've got enough housing for the population that is growing. These guys can't make any money off of anything if people aren't buying houses. Give you the same statement that one of our other, somebody else mentioned to me, she said, three out of three of the adult children in her basement think that there needs to be more housing availability. And affordability, affordability is gonna be really important as well. We know what happens when the state economy takes off. We know that other people outside of the state want to move here. If they're coming from coastal regions or regions where houses, you know, a thirty hundred square foot house is worth two million bucks, they come with a lot more buying power, which prices out a lot of the people who are here. So we've got affordability issues, we've got internal growth issues that we've got to figure out if we put a cap on growth. Like, I think a lot of members of the public would like to see what we're not saying out loud, but doing is we're trying to put a cap on population growth. That gets us into a little bit more of a scary area of government when we start talking about population control. A little bit of a challenge. So I would encourage you guys to, to think about how the private market works overall from a density perspective. Because when it comes down to water, if water is the natural limiter, but population growth is still growing, and we're not doing population control, you're gonna have a scarcity, right? It's gonna drive up scarcity really high. Scarcity is gonna bring up prices. Prices are going to bring up motivation, value is gonna bring up motivation for, and innovation from the private sector to figure out how to solve the issue of water. And whether or not we're actually building that pipe to the Great Salt Lake that, you know, people heard and kind of giggled about to help keep the lake full, or we're in the Bear River, in the Snake River. I mean, there are a few different places where we can pull from. It's just a question of, and Commissioner For, you mentioned this just before we came in, question of cost. We're all willing to spend two dollars a gallon for gasoline. And that's a lot of pipe, and that's a lot of facilities, refinery facilities. Not to say we should all be willing to spend two dollars a gallon for, for water, but I know I have. I spent at the fair, I think, four or five dollars for twelve ounces. And so we all know that.
We are embellishing things.
All right, it was sixteen ounces. Yes, right. So when you're, when you're thinking about water, there is that limiter. And if we're still growing a population, we still have a healthy economy, we still have a healthy fertility rate, water's gonna need to have, figure itself out. That means we're gonna have to turn the tap off when we're brushing our teeth. You know, in advance of, so conservation, basically, conservation, conservation. That's what Weaver Basin has been talked a lot about. It's what the state's been talking a lot about. The existing water resources we have can go a lot further, especially if we're not putting that outside. Just you said sixty-five percent of the water resources we have coming from Weaver Basin is used outside. And so we're not even using that for life sustaining purposes. And I think we'll change, all of us will have to change, regardless of whether it's this project or any other project. The other side of, of water and water conservation comes to development is we've got a lot of acreage that is in the, in the unincorporated area, both out west and up in the valley. All of that area is zoned, and it's zoned for a specific density. If you're due the math on both sides of the mountain, it's about fifteen thousand out west, and it's about fifteen thousand up in the valley. So that's about thirty thousand dwelling units already zoned. So the question of whether or not we should extend zoning ahead of water, the, the answer is we already have pretty significantly, and it isn't the, we're not fueling any fires, development fires doing that. What we're doing instead is we're giving people the ability to ask for that development to come in. That's all this rezon does is it gives the developer the ability to ask for development to come in. When they brought us a letter from some water company that says that they've got enough water, when they bring us a letter from some, some sewer company, so saying that they've got access to sewer. So all of that, I think, is pretty limiting by the way the development process works. It's just end of the day, a matter of how much are we willing to spend long term on, on water?
I make one other comment.
I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to go back to what Andrew said. Obviously, you know, I'm the one that's kind of been the water guru as far as, okay, let's make sure our waters, the water and sewer are gonna solve itself over time. So I'm off of that. The question, I think now, really for this, is this a good spot for development for the future of this county to take care of the housing needs ten, twenty, thirty years down the road? Now, I, I won't be around, so I'm not, you know, gonna take any flak. If there's water, there's not water. But hopefully it'll be successful because they'll, we've got some small people, that smart people that'll figure that out. But I, again, if you look at the land in Western Weber County, and I look at the land that's least developable, which is probably some of this piece, to me, that's the best place to put homes on if we're gonna conserve water. So it gives, it gives our kids and grandkids an opportunity for the future to possibly have some affordable housing in a location. And by the way, I think this is, as we talk about the inland port, I actually had a discussion with Speaker Schultz last Friday, directly involving North Legacy. He made some pretty good promises to me. One of the issues that he brought up was lack of population from a zoning perspective along that western corridor. I said, well, we may have a surprise coming up. We may have potential for thirteen thousand homes over that period of time. So it's gonna take two things. It's gonna take population. He's made a commitment to me as of Friday that we'll have at least a fifty-six hundred within a five or six years period of time, and they were, but we're directed from that, the alignment study's gonna go ahead. But if, I'd like rather see us decide where that future city would be with zoning in place, rather than a bunch of people get together with the idea that we don't want growth. I mean, to me, that's not the, then you stop, you know, you're putting the city in, in place to stop growth, not to account for our kids and grandkids and inflow of people, which is a bad decision. I just don't think that's the proper way to go.
And when you do it that way, you relieve that market pressure on housing demand so that new houses aren't going up in your backyard, not yours, but mine, anybody else's.
I call it the piecemeal. So if you do that, you at least have an outlet for that future demand to go to that location, rather than have everybody come in that has five or ten acres or twenty acres that now comes in, and now you've got kind of a hodgepodge of. And I think that's kind of what the planning can, is let's, let's direct this to a. Is let's, let's direct this to a core that has some development experience behind it. They've done it, they've shown what they can do. I know that. Scott and Darren have worked with that. Um, so to me, it makes sense to move this forward in some fashion. Again, take, I'm taking water and sewer off the table. That'll solve itself, or it won't solve itself. Though, we're not the water gurus, we're not the sewer gurus, we are the land use gurus. Okay, the land use gurus would say, is this a good decision? The planning commission thought so for our future in Weaver County.
Yep, and and you know, one thing to to what Charlie was saying. I'm over twenty-nine, and I know everybody else in this room is twenty-nine or younger. But I remember the time when I first got out of high school and went to college. And went to college to pass some time because I was looking for a job. There were no jobs. And if you wanted a job and you had gone to college and put the effort in, you had to leave the state to get a job. So now we have this great opportunity to keep our family here. Because we have growth potential as far as jobs go. And all kinds of jobs, not just, not just, you know, low paying jobs, but good jobs, good quality jobs. Let's feed that. That's what I'm saying. And 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 like you said, and I appreciate it, Commissioner. Um, as far as the other stuff, it'll take care of itself, because it'll either work or it won't work, but it's gotta prove itself out over time. So, thank you.
Really super quick, wanted to follow up with what Gage was saying from an economic perspective and exactly what Andrew's saying. We are setting this area up for success. Our partnership with the inland port met with them on Friday. They are gonna bankroll this, the mega sewer line that goes down that. So we have the right size sewer for long term, long term, and that, all of that. We'll go right back to Central Weaver Sewer, which then goes where? Yeah, also reuse, re- reuse plan. So we're partnering with the right people as it relates to infrastructure. What Gage is saying is we have an opportunity right now to set a precedence for. Economic and community development that's going to be complementary to the Western River General Plan. And to what's going on in the, in the, in the West Weaver inland port as it relates to the operation, which is exactly what Andrew's saying. So I just wanted to come in and say, Gage is a hundred percent on on track as it relates to. Waters who are gonna take care to resolve that this is something. The decision has to be made, and from an economic perspective, it is, it is a, is a very positive trajectory.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it, Charlie.
You're very welcome. Um, next time we'll talk about density. And a little bit about facing as well.
Okay, sounds great.
Darren had one of the.
I've got another comment. You know, we've talked about the seventy percent, you know, outdoor use. And thirty percent indoor. I mean, what's really killing the Great Salt Lake is the outdoor water use, right? Uh, we've talked about evapotranspiration, um, very shallow watering habits. Or watering grass, you know, it doesn't really get down to the deep aquifers, okay? So you've got so much, eighty percent is being depleted, whereas indoor water use ninety-five percent goes back to the system. We've talked a lot about functional and non-functional turf, you know, where turf should be placed, you know, in a landscape. But I think we also need to talk a lot about the low water use turfs as well that are trying to come out. You know, you, you're fescues, large bladed grass, the Tahoma thirty-one, which is a variety of Bermuda grass. It's gonna take some time for that to to get up and 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 running. I know Chansier Farms is trying to push the Tahoma thirty-one. But I think when we do have our functional and non-functional turf spaces, you know, where, you know, we can have some functional turf. We need to make sure that that turf is using seventy percent less water than the Kentucky Blue. And you just don't give Kentucky Blue an even option to be, you know, planted in these new developments. I mean, you just can't, you know, you just say, hey. That's not what this development is all about. This is a low water use development because we have to, if we want to continue to develop. It has to be low water use and and part of that is making sure we have the right low water use turf grass, you know, in there. Because that's, once that turf is there, it's extremely thirsty. If you prevent it from being there in the first place. Uh, the thirst goes away. And so I think that's critical as we look. Development here into the future, how critical that that is for the future.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, until next time.
Well, Andrew, if you've got that kind of discretionary time, I got a lot of work to do. And I know, and I know you know how to work.
I was thinking about that. Thanks.
Okay, we have a bunch coming in. I just. I don't know where you want to start.
This back to Riverdale? Oh, I thought we did the.
They didn't vote.
Well, they didn't vote?
No, they didn't vote.
Is there a reason why?
They, it was an administrative reason. So America, I'll explain, America First came. To us afterwards and asked to have a meeting. America First here is, yeah, they, I had, I met with Brandon, he redid his presentation, but they're gonna come back in and pitch the whole thing to you guys.
Brandon here?
Oh, good for that.
I'm sorry, we were getting that one early and then.
Well, I was, I wasn't gonna talk, but Gage stole my thunder and then I was like, oh, gee. I'll just make this really quick. Uh, so Gage, we met with um, in the port on Friday, they're gonna do a uh, PID for that, for LMSA to do that sewer line. And they're gonna use the increment to pay for that sewer line. So it's not gonna be LMSA and we're just gonna get it.
Well, we need to probably talk to. I didn't talk to Schultz about that, but I'll.
Um, that'd be great. Um, I'm gonna put a proposal together, you know, we can talk to Schultz before we take it down to the.
We'll just, we'll just need to continue to put that bug in his ear down there. He's, he's agreed, we've already agreed this. And I said, well, let's do the first mile into Weaver County, which will be fifty-six hundred.
Are we ready? Sorry, Steph, we're a little behind. Yeah, we're a little bit behind. All right, item three on our agenda, discussion regarding Riverdale West Bench Development, America First Credit Union. Uh, Commissioners, as you know, uh, Stephanie Ebert and I sit on the TEC Committee for this particular um. Uh, RDA and uh, they had scheduled some time to vote on this and there was a. An administrative. Uh, hangup, holdup for last week when I was out of, out of the country.
For the tracking.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're waiting on some appointments.
Okay, uh, so in the interim, I was contacted by America First. Um, they would like to do today just a really quick refresh of what the ask is for this uh, RDA. And so we've got some folks from America First here today. Um, we've got the Riverdale folks here today. And uh, Ashlyn has got a revised presentation that Brandon had sent over, so we're just gonna give them an opportunity to uh. Do this. Okay, we'll give them an opportunity to kind of go over this uh, in a little more uh. In a little more detail, um, since it's been quite a while. Since we actually went over this presentation with the commission, um, prior to the revote, which is going to be.
Uh, we're still waiting on one entity.
So the revote will be rescheduled in the very, very near future. So. They just want an opportunity to do one more presentation prior to the revote.
I just wanna say out of the gate here, this is almost as scary as going for a ride in a Tesla truck. With Jim Harvey, right, Steph?
I will say this, I was a little bit carsick after that ride.
Tell me it was Jim.
It was Jim. He's got a lead foot.
They told us we'd get out fifteen minutes and I think we took two hours, so.
And he took it off-road, if you remember.
He did. Anyway, Commissioners, we appreciate you giving us some time. Again, I'm Steve Brooks, I'm the City Administrator at Riverdale City. We, we wanted our team to be here mainly just to answer questions if you have them. I hope you don't feel that it was, we were trying to intimidate you by any means. But we've got uh, our engineers, we've got our finance people, both from America First and Riverdale. And we've got the president, the CEO, uh, Thane Schaefer from America First, just because we want you to be in. On here, we're not trying to hide anything from anybody, and so we wanted them here in case you have questions. We've also asked Brandon to put a presentation together and to try and just simplify this as best we can, just so you can see that. You know, when, when I took over in this position four or five years ago, that property was gonna be all warehouses. Unfortunately, um, America First stepped in and purchased that. And now we've got what's before you today. But to make this thing work. It's gonna cost a lot of money, because we weren't gonna do a whole lot with it other than warehouse, which wouldn't have generated any money for any of us, to be honest with you. We're very little. And we're excited about what America First has to offer here. We look at this and it's not just the. The property taxes that they generate, but we also look at it as, you know, there could be as high as seven thousand jo- jobs that come into this thing. So it benefits the whole county in drastic ways. And so we want to at least get a fair shot at it, but we certainly don't want to hide anything from you, so. As we go along, if you have questions, feel free to please uh, jump in and 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 ask anything you've got. I think we've got the people here that can answer any questions you've got. So with that being said, I'll turn the time over to Brandon and he'll, he'll take it over from there.
Are you the slide?
I've got it, Ashlyn's got you, yeah.
If you go ahead and advance. Um, so thanks for the introduction. We do have a number of slides here, we won't cover all of them. I sent that forward to Stephanie to send to you. In case you needed to have a bit more information, but um, everything we're talking about is on the summary sheet that you have there. Uh, so that's gonna give you all the details. So this is one of the few districts um, that you're participating in probably that still is governed by a tech. And so what we're looking for is a affirmative vote on an amended budget from the tech. And the ideal situation would be for the entire tech body to make that affirmative vote, including the county. Go ahead, please. Um, I think you're all aware of where this is, uh, at the, at the intersection there of I eighty-four and um. I fifteen, it's about a seventy-four acre area there in the blue. Go ahead, please. Uh, that's a blown up um, version. Most of the land that we're talking about is north of Riverdale Road there, although the entire yellow area. Is the RDA. And it's been around since two thousand and five, so this is not a new RDA. We're amending an existing budget that's in place today. It was established. The, the project area was established in oh five, the budget was established in two thousand and eleven. And we have just triggered the collection period in twenty twenty-five, so. That the agency has not been collecting tax increment on this project area. Um, as of today, we, we still have, our first collection will be for tax year twenty-five in um, FY twenty, or in fiscal year. Calendar year twenty-six. Um, so a little bit of history, again, I mentioned, oh five was the creation year. Evaluation um, was set on a twenty-eleven base year. Which we have on our records of a little over nineteen million. There was a couple of amendments made in nineteen and twenty-one. Which took the original fifteen-year district to a seventeen-year district. So as it stands right now, it's um, a seventeen-year district at a hundred percent participation, up to nine million dollar cap. That's where we're at today. Um, at the time that it was created, America First was not in the picture. Um, as Steve mentioned, this eventually evolved into, into a warehouse project. America First had land. Um, in the, in the area, but it wasn't the project that we've conceived today collectively. Hence the need for some changes. And so it's evolved over time. The major delay in this um, in this project in this area is infrastructure. It's been a vacant um, orchard for most of our lives because it lacks infrastructure that supports development. Most of that infrastructure comes in the form of uh, u- utilities, roadways and access. I've got a list of those things, um, we'll talk about here in just a minute. But infrastructure um, implementation is just one of the um. Needs and benefits of this project. The infrastructure that we would be creating here actually helps. Create better access for everyone in and around Riverdale. Uh, as you know, Riverdale Road is a major east-west corridor. And it can't handle uh, the traffic that it has on today, let alone traffic that would come with major development. So. Increasing that is a major part of this. Uh, you can see there, I've listed just a number of the infrastructure elements that we would be looking at, um, implementing, that's on the sheet as well.
Brandon, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna interrupt for two seconds. So one of the things we did uh, last week, I met with uh. Brooke Stewart, um, and I had her go through and research these particular infrastructure projects. To make sure that, to find out where they were being funded from. None of the projects listed on this project list are being funded by UDOT. So, and they're in, they're very low uh, on the.
Eighty-four.
Sorry, yeah, that's right, the I fifteen eighty-four ramp. Yeah, but it's not a, it's not a phase one uh, project, she said.
It's being constructed, they're, they've bid it, they, they're hiring a contractor, it's happening this summer.
So, but everything else is um, up to Riverdale and the developer to facilitate. Uh, as it relates to this project area and what Brandon was saying is, a lot of these, a lot of these pieces of infrastructure, um. Particularly the traffic improvements are going to be beneficial outside of the project area. So I just wanna make sure you guys knew that we, our department had gone through and done due diligence on that to make sure they weren't being funded by WFRC or or UDOT.
And just by the way, on those ramps, the I fifteen and I eighty-four, they're not fully funded by UDOT, though either the, the. When, when UDOT first came to us, they were just gonna replace what was there, and us knowing that this potential could blow up. We went back to UDOT and said, you can't put the same ramps in there. And fortunately, America First has stepped up to expand, to pay for the expansion on her, so even that's been part of.
So we have Jeff and Jake here from AWA, who has been the engineering firm uh, since the conception of this. So they've been working with UDOT. They understand all the infrastructure details. If you have any questions about um, the interactions with UDOT. And the projections that UDOT has made or anything like that, Jake and Jeff can answer that specifically.
So as it relates to our economic development finance committee, we believe that those, that. The more detail we had gotten from Brandon and his team as it relates to that infrastructure does kind of fit the definition of our policy for public infrastructure. The majority of those listing on that last slide.
And so here's some maps, uh, there's one here and and the other one, uh, this one shows a fifteen, um, fifteen hundred west widening, so. If you're familiar with that area before Cozydale was taken out or portions of it were taken out. This road is partially um, there and cozy, and part of Cozydale is still there as well, but at the end of the. At the end of the day, that's what this is meant to look like and, and the access that it's meant to provide, it's a much wider road. It has a bike lane associated with it, um, and it does provide. Uh, uh, much upgraded access from forty-four hundred down to fifteen, uh, to Riverdale Road. In addition to that, you can see that leg kind of going to the west there. That's a leg that will have a key um. Element to the I fifteen restructure of the off-ramp. We're still working on some of those things with UDOT. But if you look at the next slide, uh, you can kind of see. If I may, I'll, I'll be man of light here for a second. So fifteen hundred is, is here, just generally. So we're working on some what, some ways we, we can get off of bike fifteen and down directly into the, into the project area. And hence down into the neighborhoods and other places into Roy, without having to come through Riverdale Road. This interchange in this area here is heavily trafficked as well as some of this here, so ways that we can get. The people that will come to work here and shop here, without having to come through this intersection, is going to be massive. And uh, these bridges here are a key element of that as well. So all of this kind of works together and is part of the plan. To be um, funded by, by the TIF funds. And this map also shows some of the other mainline utilities, there's some electrical mainline utilities, sewer and water. That will not only support the project, but will also support. Um, growth in the area as well, because they are mainline trunks, both with rock mountain power in Central Weaver Sewer District. Go ahead, please. Okay, so uh, moving from the utilities to a little bit more of the numbers, as I mentioned. Um, this is the current budget that the county is participating in net today. You're participating at a hundred percent for seventeen years, and that really has started in twenty twenty-five and with a nine million dollar gap. Um, as you can see, the nine million dollars that uh, the project area already allows is insufficient to cover even a portion. Of the infrastructure gap that we have, and so um, that hence the reason why we're looking to amend it. That infrastructure investment yields a greater development, which then kind of returns on itself, so it's, it's all connected. As I mentioned, because we have not. As I mentioned, because we have not triggered the collection period until this year. The county's already collected six hundred ninety-six thousand dollars over the last thirteen years as a result of the development that's already happened in this project area. Go ahead. Let's skip this one. I'll get, yeah, the bigger one is here. So this is the summary of the budget and Weber County is highlighted there. Um, and it's a little bit small to read, so I've I've written it out in a different way. If you'll go advance one more, please. There we go. So the request is for a total of ten million dollar investment. That would be the cap. And we'll write the we'll write the resolution of the tech to include entity caps similar to how interlocal agreements work. Um, as I mentioned, you've received a little under seven hundred thousand thus far. Over that period, because it's an eighty-twenty split. Over that period of twenty-two years, though the county would be investing ten million, you'll be receiving. Uh, a little over two point five million, whereas right now you're receiving zero over seventeen years. So the bulk of that twenty-two years currently you'd be receiving zero, whereas this proposal puts you at about two point five million over over twenty-two years. So what that means is right now, today, you're collecting about fifty-five thousand dollars on this entire seventy-four acre area. After twenty-two years, if you make the ten million dollar investment and we're able to build this project in the way that we envision it. Your new tax collection would go up to about seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars per year thereafter, in perpetuity. Go ahead, please. And so just to summarize, um, the the entire proposal, again, we're not looking at changing the boundary. All we're looking at is changing it from seventeen years to twenty-two years with an investment cap of fifty-one million instead of nine. And changing the participation ratios from eight hundred percent to eighty percent over that twenty-two years. By doing so, that would allow us to build the infrastructure that's necessary to. Facilitate the almost billion dollars worth of investment that America First and others will make in that area. In addition to the job creation and the economic vitality that comes from all the indirect benefits. Uh, from a construction project that lasts many, many years. So. We feel this is a one of the project areas that is tailor-made for RDA tax increment finance and we hope that the county would see the same. So we have other slides we can get into, but I'll stop there and answer any questions.
So I I do in in the. In all transparency, this is just for the the original RDA area that has the T E C. So Riverdale will be coming back to talk about implementing a second. CRA. Yes. So I want to make sure that everyone's on board with 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 that request that it's that that is actually going to happen too. And. One more. Right there.
I appreciate you bringing that up. So. This budget would only, if we just amended this, the RDA without doing a CRA. This budget would only give us a net present value of about twenty-five million. That's well under the forty-five million that we're anticipating. By doing the CRA, which we're in the process of doing, that brings on another nine million dollars for a total net value of thirty-four. We're still under the forty-five million that we think the. Project is going to take. Uh, and. I think that's one of the benefits of having an amazing partner like America First, who's willing to put in that kind of an of investment. So. It's really a shared load across all the entities and the the beneficiary, which is in this case is America First, to get to that forty-five million. So that thirty-four million number there is is the the combination of both the existing RDA and the future CRA. We just wanted to be kind of transparent.
So the county's portion of that, if you can go over that, Brandon, so they have an understanding what the RDA and the CRA, what the county would be contributing over the life of both. Project areas.
During the TIF life, it's ten million in the amended CRA and five billion in the future CRA with a net present value of about. Little over six, almost seven million dollars.
And what I'm I can't see that that far away. What's the series term, life term?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years, that's right.
We would be asking for seventy-five percent over fifteen years on the future CRA.
Yeah. Questions? I'm sorry.
I got a lot of questions, but I I think I'd like to just listen just a little more first.
Yeah, so I want to go back to our policy. You know, we set that policy for a reason. And that we expected everybody to play on the same field, not play favorites. So we're at eighty percent. I thought our policy set to a maximum of seventy-five.
Uh, our policy says fifty percent at fifteen years, and then the commission has the ability to raise the percentage. Um, uh, based on the public infrastructure. Component and the public benefit component to the county overall. And that's that's in your discretion to do that. But the policy is in line.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent at fifteen.
Where's the where's the school district? Percent wise.
So they're a tech vote, just like the.
Yeah, so they agreed to this. You've got their vote?
Yeah.
All right. And then so you think that this all goes for the public infrastructure that again, going back to policy.
So that's where this gets a little tricky because this is an old tech RDA. We don't do interlocal agreements, so we don't have the ability to do what we normally do with our other cities. And that's to create an interlocal agreement that says. Lauren, speak to this and if if I'm not doing her doing it justice. Lauren has structured the interloc agreements to speak specifically to the infrastructure that says. You will only use the county's funds for infrastructure, for public infrastructure.
Yeah, it's exactly what we.
So that's the part that concerns me.
Yeah, we can.
How much of this goes in the developer's pocket versus? What, you know, my concern with this is obviously the percent. That's a big one for me right now. Making sure that it goes into public infrastructure and not into that's the reason we set that in place. Is we don't want to make, you know, a couple of developers rich on this project. If it goes into public infrastructure, then we need to look at it because that's a public benefit. We're using Weber County tax dollars. Not to go in the back pocket of a development or any institution. And then you can assure us of that, then I'm probably a noble on this.
And I I mentioned a few minutes ago that this is one of those few RDAs that are tailor-made for the statute. And that's because we have a local business, not a developer building out the project for the most part.
But it's just a pass through.
Well, it's a pass through, but they're.
Pass through from the local business to a developer.
No, no, they they are the entity, the beneficiary. There's contractors who are doing the work who get paid on a fee schedule, but there are no developers. Um, as far as the America First campus, there are other parcels that might be, there might be.
So what what Commissioner Crowe is saying is it's just private, it's the private entity. So what what we're saying is our policy caters towards the public entities portion.
Public versus private.
Exactly.
You get that.
Yeah, so and where we have to hang up administratively with the T E C and the and the old RDA. Because of the old statute is that we wouldn't be able to go into an interlocal agreement. With the RDA saying that to protect to protect the counties and protect the county's investment from going into something like. A building on the campus. Does that make sense?
We're we're um. Willing and able to draft the resolution of the tech. And any approving resolutions of the R D E board that could stipulate that.
Well, I'd have to have that before. I can I can speak up real quick. A hundred percent of this is going to public infrastructure.
We would need that in writing.
Yeah, and what then that's what Brandon was just, I I concur with what Brandon just said and putting it in the writing of the resolution is the. A hundred percent of this is planned to go into that list of infrastructure on there. Absolutely. So then you wouldn't mind signing off on a revolution if that's okay. Absolutely.
For me, that's the only way I would enter.
Yeah, we have a draft form.
I want to see. I want to see that.
Wish we had that today.
Let's have you partner up. Let's have you partner up with Lauren and we'll get a draft together that we can present to the commission.
Yeah. Well, we already have the resolution, so I can send it over after this meeting.
But I'm also not saying. That I'm ready to move that far up for fifty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a big jump from our policy. It's it is a big, it's a really big jump from our policy.
I agree.
So is there any concern with you've already drafted the resolution and you have the your public hearing is tomorrow?
Not for the tech.
Okay.
So that's the tech.
So who who gives us the resolution? Who signs up on the resolution?
So there'll be two resolutions, one from the tech. They approve the budget and then one from the R D E board, they also approve the budget. So there'd be two resolutions. They're drafted with similar language. Um, the tech did not vote when we met on the thirtieth. Although we're having a public hearing for the R D E board tomorrow, they're not voting either. So you have plenty of time to review the resolution and and get it to your liking.
So I just, we want to make sure that the proper people have signed that resolution. People in authority to sign it, you know, unless I don't trust Brandon, but let's get the right people.
Sign anything.
Anything back?
No, I think for me it'd just be cast in stones. I think I, for the most part. I'm I'm warmed to the I'm warmed to the proposal. And I think the reason, look. The reason I'm warmed to the proposal, I can't turn around in any situation anywhere, anytime. Where I don't see America First helping out. Local folks that are local now. I'm amazed at how they're able to do. What they're doing up there and I'm I'm by that area every week. I've driven through there and can't wait for that new road to. Quit throwing me off on living home.
We need a little more.
Detours.
We need a little bit.
Small there where Carl Brook used to live on. On that little air bin corner. Uh, but I I think, but that's a lot of increment difference. And that that's a that that we set our policy at fifty for a reason. And that's for the people of of Weber County. This but I'm I'm. If it, yeah, I I would almost say if it was anybody else but. America First, um, I'm really happy to know that they've. Kept their business and their operation here. I've done everything I could to help them perpetuate your little. New little road. That's coming in for the. Off the freeway with folks from region one at UDOT and everything else. Uh, this is a big deal and I am interested. I could tell you right now, you're going to need to change this sheet right here. Because as you move towards phase two, I think everybody in the room can hear that just kind of how this is going for phase two. Where that's going to kind of end up. So you may need to massage your numbers a little bit. But I think the only two people, and it may be, it may be you, Commissioner, but. Brooks and I are going to be the only two people that were out there long before. And you talk about things going on out there and. And have been since the days of the Ellis's and. And Cozydale was late to the game. They were a long time after. But I remember too, when you've had, America First had their little car lot out there and can't remember Cory. Cory Bags course.
Yeah, bags.
Yeah, the little little house out there and. Long time. So I think that's kind of where I just I'm talking in circles now.
Storytelling. I'll say I'll say one more comment about the numbers as it relates to the current U R A. Uh, uh, sorry, U R A, sorry. So I mean, the R D with the that, yeah, the original R D. So. We would have missed out on seventeen years of increment completely. So I know that it's not in line with our policy. Um, but the twenty percent, you're going to see that the most amount of investment in the first five to ten years of this. So there is that to consider and that we would still be getting that twenty percent. And if if they're willing to conform with our policy as it relates to the resolution and what Gage was suggesting. I think that from a numbers perspective. Um, it's it it would be a county benefit to have that a different twenty percent. And and for the ten million investment.
So let me ask a question. So for the tax increment, obviously, America First doesn't pay any property tax on their own facilities, correct?
They do.
They do.
Incorrect. You pay full, full.
Yeah, they pull, yeah, they'll pay the.
Required to by the state.
We are, we are.
You are?
It's income tax that we're exempt from, not property tax.
So property tax you pay, okay? Are you willing to pay income tax?
As I say, you're talking to Gage.
All right, I just wanted to clarify this.
Yeah.
Property tax wasn't fat being paid.
Yeah, so we would, the county would still get that twenty percent of that initial. And like I said, usually when we we structure these. Uh, series, uh, you're going to have that and Brennan can speak to this. You're going to have that that biggest benefit in the first five to ten years is when you're going to have that biggest investment and then it will taper off. Um, so that's something to consider too, as we move forward and making sure that it's still in line with the policy as it relates to the infrastructure investment, which is it's pretty hefty. Okay, thanks for the, thank you.
You know the next steps.
And then would you guys like to, how would you like to revisit this after we work with Warren? Probably back here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Commissioner.
You have an administrative meeting, so I would end up in a motion to saunter.
Motion to saunter.
Favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're back from our administrative meeting and we will continue on with our work session. Item five is a discussion regarding the planning commission's recommendation regarding the bit in her three zone. And trail within the upper irrigation canal easement connecting forty-one hundred west street. Felix Gilverino, Charlie Urt, Rick Gerler, Sean Wilkinson, Liam Kio and Gary Myers. Wow.
Yes, we're back.
There we are.
Yeah, and this time we have a little more time. So Mr. Pat Burns here in the audience could chime in and share some of his details he has, but. Also, just a quick recap from our meeting last week. It was, um, there were still some questions up in the air whether. You know, if what the plan B looked like for the pathway alignment along the south end of this west development. Um, but you can see. On here. The planning commission did forward positive recognition to the county commission. However, there was the condition that we just want to make sure we have good direction from the county commission on what they'd like to see. On this pathway alignment. And I'm trying to get this. Map a little bit for the over. Since to be frozen up. Okay, let's see if that worked. So they, on the south end of this development, there's a Hooper Slough. And you can see, as we zoom in a little ways, you can see actually portion of it is is daylighted. But then you also have some that is underground. And. The planning, I believe the planning commission's recommendations was that, you know, being that that portion of the Hooper Irrigation Canal is underground. There's there is opportunity to follow the Western Weaver General Plan with, you know, with better precision. With by aligning the pathway on top of the. The Hooper Irrigation Canal connecting straight to forty-one hundred west.
You're right.
Yes.
All the way to forty-one.
Clear down.
Is that the underground portion and?
Yeah, it goes underground.
It'll go underground.
I think it's right about where the other ditch converges.
All of this here is piped.
And so.
So the trail will be done this way.
Right. And so there, I think there there are several. Routes that could work for for pathway and pedestrians. And what the developer would like to show us today are several options. Um, when the when the planning commission made their recommendation, it was. Under the ideal scenario, we could follow the general plan. You know, right on, right on the line and just go straight over to forty-one hundred. Um, there there is some complexity simply because this development does not. Is not, does not extend over the top of that Hooper Irrigation easement. Hooper actually owns that property. And then you have some property to the west of of that, which is also it's a private owned by Mr. Musgrave. And so, I mean, there there would definitely need to be some. Some property acquired for that pathway easement and also construction of that pathway if they wanted to follow the the Hooper Irrigation Canal. As was mentioned, let's see if I can, I'm going to annotate. This screen to show. Let's see, so pathway coming here. And then up was something that proposed by the developer. And then hooking up with the with the ten-foot pathway here along the south edge of the road and then going over to forty-one hundred. There, I guess there's plenty of opportunity as well for pedestrians to head straight north from this point. There, I guess there's plenty of opportunity as well for pedestrians to head straight north from this point. Now going straight north this way. Um, there's also opportunity for, um, this pathway to come along the edge. And possibly go around the edge of the basin and then connecting up with this one. Um, and then this, this route would be following what's drawn in the general plan here. And the. There will also be a ten foot pathway on the east edge of forty one hundred West Street. Going straight down to nine hundred South and. Connecting up with a, a ten foot pathway on the north side of, of nine hundred South Street. Yeah, part of the planning commission recommendation was also that this road. Be designed as a neighborhood collector with that ten foot pathway on the south side. And then that ten foot pathway would just stub to this east edge. At which point, you know, if, at a later point, future development, this ten foot pathway would continue eastward. Um, can we tell them what's further eastward? Yes.
Is that pathway on the road, is that the plan?
So, yes, that that pathway through this bitten lane would be, um. Within the, yeah, within the public right of way.
But on the road or like more like a sidewalk?
It would be more like a sidewalk.
Horrified sidewalk.
Yeah, and again, how wide would that be?
That would be ten feet, yes, on that. And so, I mean, continuing west, you you would continue west to a certain point, you hit thirty six hundred West Street. And you, you join up with another development called Riverbend Cluster Subdivision. And when they came through with their cluster plan, they had some open space and part of the cluster requirement was to have a pathway system through. The cluster, and so what this would do is it would align with the cluster. And then you would also have, um, opportunity to join up with the. The Emerald Necklace along the Weaver River, so you would have this nice connection through to the system of the, of the pathway. And so, and and we, we, we do have the opportunity to craft some language in the development agreement. Something that would satisfy to the best ability what the planning commission was looking for. Um, but also being able to, um, uh, keep the, keep the, uh. Keep the pathway alignment in, in an efficient manner.
Well, I think the efficiency is important to me and and I like having a plan B and C and so forth, but. Um, there, there were a couple of projects in West Haven, um, that could not accommodate, uh, our trail. We were trying to connect the mouth of the canyon to, you know, the one that goes all the way to Utah County. And we were the missing piece and we were so determined not be the missing piece that. We went through a couple of different neighborhoods where the trail ends and then you, I'm looking at the cul-de-sac specifically. The trail ends and you're just on the street and you try to find your way back again to the path and that. There are two neighborhoods that you still are like nowhere to go and you kind of take the sidewalk and then. You have to loop back and 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 backtrack to get back to the trail, which is fine. I mean, the intent is that in the future that will connect straight. But, but the temporary part is can be frustrating for trail users and so I, I still would like to see it go on the canal, um. And maybe. Maybe there's a part A and part B, you know, where the one through the cul-de-sac closes down eventually or the one, I don't know. Those are just my thoughts from my experience in my former life.
I, I actually, uh, I know that Mr. Burns said he'd connect going around that. Detention pond, but I think that's a preferred route and the cul-de-sac.
To the west? To the west?
Yeah, I like the one, I like the one going straight up. Actually, I like the one going straight out here. Like this, but that's not part of this, this discussion, you know? Uh, but I don't think we can get a trail dead end to nowhere. I don't understand how this gets in.
I don't think that one.
Following the Hooper Canal though is, I think this is, this is basically a feeder, this is the main path.
Connections, yeah. You see it as connections and I'm, I'm more comfortable.
I want to know, I got lost on that. I'm one of the guys that got lost on the original Golden Spoke, but I didn't catch it again till Roy. I couldn't find. Where am I supposed to go? Of course, I'm not leaning back, just in case you think and I'm like Greg Lamont right that night. But it's, I couldn't figure it out. I don't, I hate these kind of things. Just Felix and the rest of you. I hate.
I don't know if that's, that's something you're looking at as a temporary.
So this would be. Charlie's recommendation is we're gonna go so far without a trail connection, the idea, and probably don't speak, uh, term is. When this gets developed, this trail will come to tie into this trail, so it's connector. So we only go so far without a connector, so you don't have to walk six hundred feet. So we've got connectors going where you only have to go so far until you connect to a trail, so you're not walking down the sidewalks.
Future trails.
Future trails, yes, sorry, thank you. And so this obviously isn't any good right now, but once this gets developed, it'll tie to this trail.
Does it, is the canal off the table then?
No.
You just don't have it right now, right?
Correct, so I have reached out to Hooper Canal and I talked to Rex Hancock, who is the, uh. Chair, the president of the board, he said. Um, he didn't hang the phone up on me, which was great, I thought that might happen. But he said, no, Matt, he said, I'm not saying no at all, I think especially on this piece because they own it. And there's already a road there, they've always said, let's figure a way to do it, we might have to build up above, over the, um. Where the actual pipe is, if it crosses the pipe, they have enough room, even gotta look at it and engineer it correctly, now they only own up to right here. Then it's a se- separate parcel, I've reached out to this guy, he's coming to my office tomorrow. He's not opposed to it, in other words, as long as I pay him money. And so that's where we have to work that out, so Hooper, I'm gonna, I'm on their board first. Monday or second Monday next month and I'll see what they, I'll sort of propose it to them. My only fear is, not fear, but my only, kind of like what you had said last time as well, I'll, and I'll push hard to get this, I don't mind. But if we can't get that, then, you know, as long as we have another option that I can control, I can control this because I own all this ground, so that's easy for me to control. We bring it this way and tie it in, and I think maybe an answer. Charlie, tell me if I'm wrong on this, we're be, we're doing a ten foot asphalt path, so it's gonna be not a sidewalk.
It's gonna look like a trail.
It'll look like a trail, so you, if you do come this way, no matter how far from the path you are, you'll see that it's an asphalt path. In my opinion, now, Charlie, if I'm wrong, that's what I understand.
You're it.
Yeah, a long ways. So would you continue the ten foot asphalt either way? So you continue this regardless?
Yes, so this will have a ten foot asphalt right here, no matter what.
All the way through.
Yep, that's what the planning commission staff asked us.
And then an option would be if you can't do here.
I can do here because I own it.
So you own all this?
So anything black, I guarantee I'll do.
Oh, okay.
And they'll all connect to the canal trail.
They'll all connect eventually, connect.
So the only question is right through here with the hooker.
Now, I do own this, so I can put the trail on my ground back here.
Got it, yeah, okay, that's straight out, it's better for me. Yeah, but if, otherwise, I hate, listen, I live in a cul-de-sac, I don't want people walking up and down my. You, you, you go around that and I, and I think that. The overflow detention basins can be nice, they can be an aesthetic, that can be a good thing, so. I, I, the trail around that makes it natural. I wouldn't, I, that's, that's my, that's my three cents.
This plan right here, we wrote all three options. So we have this in green, which goes to right here, this is Hooper owns this. By the time I wrote this, I hadn't talked to this homeowner, now I have and he's agreeing that.
We hope that he agrees.
Yeah. Then this is the other option, we did it in different colors so you could kind of see, this is an option here. And then coming through here is an option too.
I'm okay with all of them except this cul-de-sac one.
Well, we, we are required, Charlie's requiring that path in the cul-de-sac anyway.
Every cul-de-sac. And let me, let me put a little bit, let me put a little bit more thought behind your thought. When people buy here, they're gonna buy because or knowing that there's a pathway there. Think about the one that's up on Eastwood, uh, we got that pathway connection through, uh, people love that pathway.
But you know what?
Where you are currently, you definitely don't want people going down because you've got that, there's that one that's exclusive.
Charlie, all of these people would access it though, without having to go between the nodes by their backyard.
Yeah, and I think we could, we could probably yield, if it's going around, uh, all that, I think we could, we could yield on that, it's a very small cul-de-sac.
There's another thing to consider, I don't know the answer. It's the complete opposite of what I was just saying about going in between houses. But when you put a fence on both sides of a trail in between houses and some of the. When this becomes homes, that's gonna be a long trail that probably gonna be fenced on both sides and that gets a lot of graffiti.
So we've got, we've got two things that we have implemented to try and solve that concern, because we did think about that. Um, the developer has two options, one option is to do a fifteen foot wide, uh, right of way with a ten foot pathway inside. But if he does that option, he has to build the fences and those fences need to have about thirty percent opacity, so every third slat, if you're doing slats. Would need to be out or something like that. Um, or if he doesn't want to build the fences, then he could do a thirty foot wide right of way. That thirty foot wide, the reason for that is to provide better, um. Yep, so it's a, it's a lot harder to hide and and tag.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we're gonna get rid of.
I know we can't, I wish we could.
We put some of those requirements in based upon, um, some of the problems they had around Roy High School. There's a lot of access points going in along there and some of them are not safe. Um, and there was some instances where there was some activity that happened that wasn't conducive, but. Police had to come out, so that's why we were looking at some of those things when we did the ordinance.
I appreciate that. Appreciate you considering that, because it's a big deal, it kind of ruins the trails when, and it's not just. Spray paint either, you know, right, it's just.
Nefarious activity.
Yeah, things, the fences get broken and it can be a mess.
It's required to be landscaped as well, so hopefully if it doesn't look derelict, it's inviting for people to be on, um, the. Planning term, it's an acronym, um, SEPTA, Prime Prevention Through Environmental Control. Um, or environmental design, and so as long as we design it correctly, we can hopefully, uh, reduce. Nefarious activities. I don't know, we're gonna get rid of all of it, but.
So your concerns?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I can understand why Charlie kind of wants that for future, I. To me, this is a, this is a great route here, so I, I would suggest this is a, is a great option. Um, I think you just need to see what you can work out with the canal company and your neighbor there. But, yeah. I'm okay.
Anything else?
No, I, I, I'm. Charlie, I got a lot to learn, I, I don't. People buy back just that pathway.
I don't know if they, they buy a lot because of the pathway, but pathway connectivity does create value. And I can get you some scientific research on that.
See, look though, connectivity, connectivity.
Yeah, I put it, I put a gate in my pants and go onto the path, I'm not gonna worry about path.
I think it's thrown guns through it, from a residential standpoint, I can see where you're coming from, but also. Yeah.
If you're wandering, you go, what's in here? And then you're somebody's neighborhood and you just mean to leave it.
I mean, if I'm, I'm, if I'm living in this house, I'm gonna go out my back door and go onto this path from this way, I'm not gonna walk around and go through my neighbor's yard.
No.
These are just strangers.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so we could, we could give her the one from the cul-de-sac. Yeah.
Are we good? Are we good?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Just allow those dudes to put a gate in their pants.
Jim lives in a cul-de-sac, don't you know?
I brought a DVD, so take them with me, you guys can.
You can take them. I don't. Okay.
Whoa, six minutes.
Here we are, barely behind is all. I need to entertain a motion to move to a closed session to discuss pending litigation.
So moved, second.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Harvey.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, we're in a closed session.
Always is easy.
I know.
He know.
Look at that one. Now I had a schedule.
Okay.
Wow.
I'm ready for a motion to leave the closed session.
Motion to adjourn the closed session, go back to work session.
Second.
All in favor? Look at us, we are ahead. Oh no, I guess we're right on time.
Oh, I wa- I missed the three fifteen. I thought we were going, okay.
Oh, we are.
I gave a.
Jared's out there and Darren Stansfield, is that from his office or is?
So the last one.
Come on in.
Has to do with that recommendation.
Is it just you?
Well, the property owner was invited.
Is that Darren Stansfield?
Yeah, I really can't remember what he looks like, so there is somebody out there in shorts, but.
Oh.
So these are two separate cases?
He's not, he doesn't have to speak.
We've got Blue Water and then we've got. Owner Christopher Clay.
We have a packet from you, don't we?
That is a different one.
Yeah.
I can, I can update you on that one. That's from Andy. That's from the auditor's office. That one we approved.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wait a minute.
The only one that we didn't approve was the Blue Water.
Alright, so that's.
Water is the packet that I gave you.
Okay, Blue Water is what we're on right now.
Right.
Okay.
That's the one you and I talked about.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for putting.
You wanna see if that's him?
His name was Derek, right?
Darren.
Very good.
Alright then.
All I said for today, I thought it'd be too. Right here.
Thanks for being here. Hey, we are on agenda item seven, discussion regarding Blue Water LLC primary exemption, Jared Price. Is here and I, we're joined by Darren Stansfield as well.
Yep.
Okay. Jared.
Well, I provided a little bit of background. Um, essentially what happened was in, in our March, um, tax review. Meeting, um, this was an item that, uh, was on the agenda. That DeeDee had put on the agenda before, before her retirement. Um, and I came just with the recommendation that DeeDee had given me before she retired. The situation was that, um, the, the property in Roy was, um, was sold. Uh, ownership transferred. There was a warranty deed. On the warranty deed, you have a copy of it. It changed the mailing address, the tax mailing address to Tremonton, to a Tremonton address. That initiated us, um, changing it from primary, from having a primary exemption to having, uh, no exemption. Um, we sent out, uh, three separate notices to the Tremonton address, uh, that are standard, normal address that we do. Our, uh, letters that we do. There's no reply to those, no response to those. And then, um. The tax notice, valuation notice went out in, um, you know, before the V O E. Um, we have the dates of all of those. And then, of course, the tax bill went out as well, all to the same address. Then the, um, mortgage company paid the, the taxes. And in January, sometime in January, there was an email that was initiated to DeeDee asking about. Changing it back to the exemption, the, the primary exemption. And on, um, January twenty first, uh, online, uh, there was a, an application submitted online through the portal. Uh, and because the time had already cha- had already expired for the twenty twenty four year. Uh, we were only able to make the change for the twenty twenty five year, which currently we have it. It qualifies for the primary exemption. There's a long-term renter in it. We've made that change and that will be, uh, what it is going forward. The tax review, um, board met in March. And looked at all, all of the evidence, the information that DeeDee had provided and voted to deny changing the. The exemption, um, the exemption for the twenty twenty four because the time had lapsed. Um, I did not know that, so after that meeting, I submitted to you the ones that we approved. I did not submit the ones that we had denied, because I didn't know that that's what we had to do, my being new in this position. So. This was never came before you on the commission before. You haven't voted on this prior in any commission meetings or work meetings. Um, in talking to Darren, um, and he called and, or emailed, I can't remember what it was. We, we connected. Yeah, combination of both. We connected and he wanted to know what the results were. Um, and, um, I, I let him know what had happened and there's a little bit of frustration. Um, that, you know, that was the result. Asked if there was anything that we could do, because he wasn't able to attend. That first March meeting. And I said, well, I, I don't see any reason why I couldn't put it back on our May meeting. And let the tax review board meet again on it. So we met, uh, last week. Um, kind of the same packet together. Darren was there. Uh, the review committee. Uh, Courtland was there, the review committee, um, recommended the same thing, uh, as they did before. Um, helped me make sure I'm not characterizing anything differently. Darren asked if there was any, any other position. And, and it was our position that we have the, we have the process that we follow and there really wasn't any. We couldn't deviate from that. The notices had gone out, but there could be a scenario where the commission could hear it and our. Our situation from the tax review board is that we just recommend to you and then ultimately the commission has to decide. Based on our recommendations. Um, and so, uh, Courtland suggested that we put it on the commission meeting. And rather than have it all hashed out in the middle of commission meeting, um, put it here on the work. Uh, the work, um, session so that it could be on a consent item. There's one item that. Um, I added since the review, when I was at UAC. Uh, I visited with the company that does our mailings for us, that sends, actually sends these mailings out. And I asked Sue, um, she's the owner of the company. I said, we have this scenario where, you know, a property owner didn't get the, you know, didn't get these notices that we sent. You know, is there anything that we can track to see if they actually went and she said without, um. Requesting ahead of time certified mail, you really can't do that. Well, we can't afford to certify mail a hundred and ten thousand parcels. Um, or how many ever it happens to be. Um, she did, she did suggest though that. That, um, to check with Tremonton City and see if they've had issues with this address receiving mailing. She said sometimes there are. Some, you know, addresses that we just, you know, just have a hard time getting mail. And, uh, she looked up and, and Tremonton's Water Company is actually one that they do the mailings for as well. And so I called the water company, um, last Thursday. And they said that they don't have any return mail from there. Their notices are getting delivered, um. To that address on a timely basis. They're not having any issues with this address. So that was the only change from. The, uh, from the, uh, tax review, uh, meeting to today that, that I had followed up on. So. Um, Darren wanted to come and kind of talk about their side, you know, his, his, uh, perspective and what's kind of happened on. On that side. So that's, that's where we are.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so last year, me and my partner, unfortunately Norman, um, wasn't able to make it here today, but we, uh, invested in a house together in Roy. Um, and to, you know, invest in a house together to, to get it rented out. I have here, which I didn't have last time, but I do have a. Residential lease agreement, um, starting March first, uh, yeah, March first, twenty twenty four. And then I also have, um, copies if you'd like to see just showing that payments and such were actually made, um, through Zillow. So it was. A primary resident of, um, Kevin and Diane Garcia, um, from March first, and they're still there today. So it, it hit the hundred and eighty three, um, hit the hundred and eighty three requirement to be considered a, um, to get that exemption. Um. We, um, we never received any of these, um, these letters. All we can say is they never showed up in our, in our mail. Um, Jared has sent us, um, copies of what they would have looked like and they're pretty, they're pretty clear on what they're saying. It was about a five-minute call to save us roughly about eighteen hundred dollars in. In taxes. It wasn't a bill or anything. So it, you know, it's definitely something had we have seen. I would have, um, we'd have immediately made those calls, because it was a pretty simple procedure to get it changed. Um, for this tax year. I don't know, are we on tax year twenty five or twenty six?
Twenty five or.
Anyways, um, it was, you know, it was a pretty simple process to get it fixed and correct going forward, but I'm looking to, um. You know, essentially like our, our taxes are paid through our mortgage. Um, and I didn't notice that that had gotten taken care of until I started putting the books and everything together to file my taxes. Um, in January, and that's when I started heavily reviewing the mortgage statements and seeing that they had sent out. A lot larger anticipated property tax bill than we had, um, than we had expected. Um. Our lease here is with that good landlord residential lease. I did, you know, take those classes last February. Um, online to, you know, basically do everything that I could to try and be, um, a solid landlord. I did. Look at the county records in March and it did show that we had that exemption. It looks like that exemption had changed sometime in May. Um, it is in. Huh?
May of twenty four.
Correct. It did change in May of twenty, the, the, it had changed from. Yeah, yeah. Um, you did mention the water bill. And one thing that I was, when we were actually walking out of here last week with Norman, Norman was like. I have never received one water bill from our local water company. Everything is just done online and through a portal. So it's interesting that they said that they're sending him stuff, because that's a whole other thing. He said he's never received a single.
I asked her about that and she said it is direct deposit, but we send a receipt out every month and it never comes back.
Oh, well, he has never received one. So that's, that's, that's like a whole other thing that he should call, but.
Yeah.
So anyways, we're, um. Just trying to, you know, eighteen hundred dollars is, you know, a lot of money. We did have people in there for the appropriate amount of time in twenty twenty four. Um, to qualify, you know. I, we, we didn't receive any of those. There's no reason that I believe we wouldn't have made that five-minute phone call to. Um, not have that change. There was nothing we were avoiding of any time and it, and as soon as I caught it. Um, in January, which was roughly about sixty days after the fact that the mortgage had paid it. So I would have received that on my statement. Um, that would have showed up December first. I didn't check it in December, but when I did get it in January, that's when I called. To see if we could get it fixed. Um, so many of you would like to see a copy of the, the lease and then the actual payment history showing that we. Renters in there for the appropriate amount of time for that tax year.
I don't need to see that. It sounds like it, it's been changed now, so I don't have any, uh, question that that's been proven now, but. Can I share for work?
So let's just be, I don't wanna be clear. So you lived in the house prior?
I did not. Norman did.
Okay.
Partner did. He moved, he, he moved out mid-January and it was vacant for about a month and a half.
Okay, then you put the tenant in.
Correct.
Which obviously qualifies for the residential exemption.
Yes.
Then the county sent you a notice, because you were under code, under state code. Are responsible to notify the county that it's still your prime, uh, still qualifies for the primary exemption. Is that correct? So is that how you understand it?
I guess I wasn't aware that we're supposed to reach out and let them know. I went and checked in March and just basically looked like what the criteria was and didn't see any reason for me to call and have it changed.
So. Jared, so under protocol, and again, state laws may have changed since I've been there, does it require the county to send out a notice? Then to the homeowner to require that they, I'm gonna call reinstate, but to affirm that it's still a primary residence.
That's for.
And that's triggered by the, that's triggered by the conveyance of the deed. So you un- you understand how that take.
I understand that now, yes.
And then, so you're, you're basically saying you never received notice that it was your responsibility to notify that. The county assessor that it's still.
That is, that is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Um, you know, yeah, that, that's exactly what we're saying. If we would have received those letters, it was a five-minute call and it would have been, it would have been easy. But no, we're. I don't know where the issue was, whether it got sent, if it got lost in the mail, but every piece of mail that we have for that property, um, we put in a folder. And it's not there.
Does everything for this property go to that Tremonton address?
Correct. That is Norman's address.
Is that the correct address?
Yes, we verified it multiple times.
So you didn't, you didn't receive any notification?
No. And then also, like you said, him saying that, that the water bill saying that they send him a water bill. He's never received a water bill. For his personal residence for that as well, which is a separate issue.
Okay, so Jared, so the tax review commission rejected that argument. What was the basis for their?
Well, we have five notices that went to the address and it's hard for them to see how all five of those didn't. I mean. That's why we do multiple.
Right.
If one didn't go, you know, the, I don't know, didn't make it in the box or something like that. It's, it's could be understandable, but we followed exactly what the state code said to do. And, and that was, that was the review committees.
Five separate notices, okay.
Yeah, it would have been the three saying change it and then the valuation notice and then the tax bill.
Got it, okay, that answers my question, Madam Chair.
And the address that you have is this, it matches exactly where it fits.
Yeah, it matches the, the mailing notice. So when you do a warranty deed, there's a mailing notice, tax mailing notice, it's at the top of it. They match and we confirm that that's Norm's address that he's, it is a corner lot. I looked it up, it is a corner lot, but the, the address is correct, so.
Boy, you know, that's five different times. So that's why the plan, that's why the tax review said, ah, not gonna, this, this probably, this information was probably all given to the tax review.
Yes, this whole pack, the exact packet, other than the summary letter, I created the summary document for you guys.
Just friendly.
That, yeah, I created that. The tax review had everything else.
Well, commissioners, we have a county code that, that lays out the rules. And the notices we're saying, and, and I also wanted, I also want to mention the tax review board. Their job is to make the recommendation and they recommend it denial not only once, but twice. So I think they've given it considerable thought on two different occasions and I'd like to support them.
Yeah, and I, as much as I understand your dilemma and it's hard to understand. What a time the general public just doesn't understand the residential exemption and the filing requirement. Unfortunately, we're obligated by state to follow certain procedures. It appears to me that the county assessor has done that and the tax review, so.
I, I just have to ask on the, for eighteen hundred dollars, like I don't, besides him having a proof that a notice was generated, there's no proof they were actually sent out to us. Well, like, why would that have, like, there's no, there's no reasonable reason to see that we would have received them and ignore it five separate times when it is a very, it's a, it's a well-done notice. It doesn't like, it lets you know exactly what's going on. There's no reasonable reason that any of that would have been ignored. And there's no proof that it was actually sent. There's just proof that, that thing was generated. And that's an eighteen hundred dollar mistake. Like it says that it needs to be sent, does it act like, what does this county verbiage say? Does it need to be delivered or does it just need to be generated? Because that's all that I can show that you guys have, well, that the county had proof that they generated notices. And nothing is ever delivered. And that's the stance that we're holding.
And, and I, I am, I sympathize with, with that, you know, question. I don't, I didn't write the contract with the company that we went into business with mailing, but they do all of our mailings. So they do, from our office, they do all of the mailing. So they do all the personal property. They do the mobile homes. They do every, every one of these mailings. We, we send them the file and they send it out. And they do thousands and thousands and thousands of them for us throughout the year. And we don't have a systemic problem with people not receiving those mailings or we wouldn't be in contract with this company. The company's been around for a long, long time. They service Pleasantview, North Ogden, Harrisville, you know, lots and lots of municipalities and along the way. And so while I, I understand that, I, I just have the evidence that we.
I mean, I guess statistically speaking though, if you're doing thousands and thousands and thousands, being one hundred percent is really improbable.
I agree, but I got the number of them, five, five is good. If it was one that was got, that was lost, to me it would be one on a different property and one on a different topic, talking about probability. So I'm.
I mean, is there anything, is there anything that we could do? Because if he's also saying that the water company has said that they send us statements and we're able to prove that those actually haven't been sent to receive somehow, is there any way to come back to prove that like these were never delivered to the property? Because I, there's, we're just not getting the notices that we, that like, if we would have gotten, we'd immediately taken action. It was a simple action that.
I think your request of us is to see if we can't put this on a, consent, consent item. I think to do that, we could make a decision here. Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to support our tax review committee and deny. I'll circle.
Is this an action item?
No, I think you just have the general understanding. And if it was listed on the consent agenda and anyone wants to have it removed, any one of you can take action.
The consent agenda would be to not deny.
To deny, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I didn't realize that I need to give you all of the items that I present from the review. I had only, in the past, I've only given you the ones that you're supposed to approve.
Then he had to, by doing that, it gave him another opportunity.
It, it did.
So he's had two cracks at it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the direction then.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
Jared, you did good.
I mean, I don't understand.
He said that Norm's probably lying to him. Well, act his butt.
It's unusual over five, not to, you know.
Yeah, to miss one, maybe, but five.
That's what, and that's what DeeDee's position was too. And I, I mean, I inherited it, but I fully agree with DeeDee. There's times when we make a mistake or we change the address incorrectly. For those, one percent, it's our, it's our fault and we should correct.
Or if the act, if the address on the deed doesn't match, I mean, that's an art problem, but didn't, didn't look like that was the case.
No.
Thanks, Jared.
Not at all.
Okay.
Good, great, thank you. Okay, item eight on our agenda. Discussion regarding Weaver County Tax Review Committee Recommendation for Second Year Tax Cell Extension on Parcel 12-045-0007. The owner is Christopher Clegg in the parcel, oh, there are two. And the other parcel number is zero two dash zero six two dash zero zero four five, the owner Kevin Adams. Welcome, both of you.
Thank you. I brought copies of the tax cell extension applications if you would like one. I'm not used to doing these, so forgive me.
Okay, we got another hour and twenty minutes, but.
There's the second one for Kevin Adams. Copies, okay, we got extra. Good afternoon. Today I'm bringing forward a couple parcels currently under consideration for second year tax cell extensions that were presented to the tax review committee last week. While some of you may be familiar with the term, I'd like to briefly explain it as it's not often that these cases reach this stage. If everyone is familiar with tax cell extensions though, please feel free to stop me and we can jump ahead if you would like to. When a property owner is found to be a delinquent on their property taxes, their parcel is placed on Weaver County's tax cell list and becomes subject to public auction at our annual tax cell, where it may be sold to the highest bidder. However, if a property owner is actively trying to resolve their delinquency but needs more time beyond the scheduled tax cell date, Weaver County may offer a tax cell extension. This is an agreement between the county and the property owner. The clerk auditor's office removes a parcel from the tax cell list and the owner is given until the end of the year to pay the full delinquent amount. If the balance remains unpaid by year's end, the property is returned to the tax cell list for the following year. The initial extensions known as first year extensions can be approved directly within our office. In rarer cases such as this, where the property ends up, ends up back on the tax cell list, the owner may apply for a second year extension. These applications are escalated to the tax review committee for approval or denial and then to you, the commissioners. Second year extensions, extension requests require a statement of assets, a description of circumstances and a repayment plan. In exceptional situations such as medical emergencies, the death of a family member or other serious hardships, extensions may still be granted even without a clear repayment plan if doing so is deemed in the best interest of human compassion. There is no third year extensions. If a property owner still cannot pay off the delinquent amount after a second year extension, the county has no other choice but to auction the property unless the owner receives outside help to pay the delinquent taxes. For these two applications we'll discuss, we can either do an action to approve, deny, or request additional information. Before I go into the specifics on the first property, so any questions on all this?
I don't think so.
Nope.
Proceed.
Yeah. The first parcel for discussion is twelve oh four five oh 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 seven, owned by Christopher Clegg. The application for a second year extension was submitted by his wife, Victoria Clegg. Mr. Clegg is currently living on disability and has been unable to work due to ongoing severe medical issues. Over the past two years, he's been diagnosed with chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, congestive heart failure and lung cancer, among other things. Mrs. Clegg has also been unable to work due to both, both due to her own medical issues and the need to care for her husband. She has provided medical documentation to support the application, which I have available here in this folder. If you want to look over any of it, she's provided all medical documentation for everything. In addition, Mrs. Clegg has been diagnosed with several serious conditions, including primary biliary cholangitis. Trying to pronounce some of these. Non-alcoholic, statohepatitis, stage three fatty liver disease, stage one fibrosis, autoimmune hepatitis, Hashimoto's disease and pre-diabetic. The Clegs also have a sixteen-year-old son who has offered to begin working to contribute financially, but they have asked him to focus on his high school education instead. Mrs. Clegg is considering a return to work, but that will depend on securing care for Mr. Clegg during her absence. To date, the Clegs have paid two thousand two hundred towards their delinquent property tax balance and they are planning to continue payments of at least four hundred per month from Mr. Clegg's disability income. However, the remaining balance is, twelve three seventy-six. Yes, and at their current payment rate, they will be unable to fully resolve the balance by the end of the year without additional financial assistance. According to Weaver County Ordinance two sixteen one thirty-five, any property which in the best interest of the public should be withdrawn. Given the exceptional medical circumstances faced by the Clegg family and on the grounds of best human interest, it is my recommendation that we approve this second year extension. And it was also unanimous, unanimously approved at the tax review committee last week. Any questions on this parcel?
Have they been told that there's no third year?
Mm-hmm. They have, and I've had a lot of discussions with them, trying to help find some solution for this, whether it be tax advocates, in any way, some kind of organization that might be able to help them out as well.
Any questions on this one? All right, go on to the next one.
Jumping to second parcel, zero two zero six two zero zero four five, owned by Kevin Adams. This one's a little bit simpler. Mr. Adams was granted a first year extension last year due to having made substantial payments towards his delinquent amount, totaling four thousand one hundred. However, he was unable to fully resolve the balance by year's end and is now applied for a second year extension requesting additional time to complete payments. In April, Mr. Adams made a four thousand dollar payment covering more than half of the remaining delinquent amount. As of today, his current balance remaining is one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars sixteen cents. In his application, he stated his intent to continue making monthly payments of at least two hundred with a possibility of contributing more when feasible. Mr. Adams also noted that the issues which previously prevented full payment have been, since been resolved. Given his recent payment history, the relatively low remaining balance and a reasonable payment plan aligning with his listed income, it is my recommendation that we approve Mr. Adams' second year extension. And again, it was the tax review committee's unanimous decision to approve the second year extension as well.
Questions on this one?
That one looks like a lot better case there.
Sure does, especially with the difference between the fifty-seven hundred percent on this and the eighteen hundred, that's really loud. Questions? Although these two items will be on the consent items tomorrow in the commission meeting. Okay. Sounds good.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, it wasn't bad, was it?
Not bad at all.
Okay, Commissioners, item nine, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm Carrie's, thank you.